I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 18th. Denise, roll call please.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Pro-Tim Olson is not here.
Okay. And Captain Federall, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there we'll forego the invocation this evening. Are there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor. One announcement related to the special meeting scheduled for the 25th of August. Denise, did I get that date right?
Tuesday, the 25th.
Tuesday, 25th. This is next Tuesday. We are looking, this is a special meeting to discuss the class and compensation survey. We're looking to potentially hold it one hour earlier than we previously had scheduled so that Councilmember Olson can join from JFK. We don't know for sure if that's going to work, but just giving you that heads up that that could be something. And then I need to tell you also that we will probably have a completely unrelated item on that agenda related to an opportunity for the City Hall roof, and we will have a staff report for that out to you next day or so. I don't want to catch anybody off guard, it's just an opportunity that we need to present to you for your consideration.
Okay, great.
So 11:00 AM now?
We're tentatively. It may not work, we're gonna shoot for that.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Other announcements?
I don't have anything else on my...
Written communications?
None that I'm aware of, Mayor.
Okay. Presentations?
Two this evening. First, let's start off with the proclamation honoring Brandon Hayes for his graduation from Co-Collge and his continuing education efforts. Mayor, do you want to come forward for this?
I'd love to. Thank you, Brandon. And Mother Veronica and Linda Rifkin, if you please come forward. Facing the audience, facing...
Well, I think you could probably face the camera, then you're speaking to the, I mean... Otherwise, we can't hear you on the microphone is the problem.
Come on.
Okay.
And you know what, and I will have Mother Veronica and Linda Rifkin from Santa Candelina Foundation come and join in. The city of Avalon honoring Brandon Hayes on his graduation from Co-Collge on June 10, 2015, with a degree in business administration and psychology. Whereas it is hard to imagine the long-term benefits of a college education or a trade school, college can be intimidating, the work may seem daunting, and meeting all new people can seem overwhelming. However, there is a high likelihood that you will find others with similar interests and become acquainted with those who have completely different life experiences than you. Whereas many high school students are too young to understand fully that an equally important aspect of the college experience is making connections. Making connections means simply creating relationships with people who are further along in their careers than you. Whereas, the more education you have, the more confident you will be. As a new college graduate, when you go out into the world to places far and wide, those in hiring positions will base an opinion of you largely on your college education. If the education on your resume looks impressive, they are more apt to see you as a hard-working, competent young person. Whereas, the fact that you will be building a career for the rest of your life is reason enough to make time for a college education in every sense of the word. A clear benefit of a college education is that not only will it give you time to better know your likes and dislikes before entering the labor force, it will enhance the likelihood of a more lucrative career for you. Now therefore, please recognize Brandon in this great achievement and wish him luck on all of his future endeavors dated this date, August 18th. On behalf of the council, let's hear it for Brandon.
Thank you.
So, can you shed a little light on where you're going from here?
Absolutely.
What's next?
Yeah, I'll be heading up to Oregon here in a few weeks, next month, first week of September, and my plan is again, a few years of Oregon experience, and then looking to grad school, Oregon State. So, yeah, that's the plan, I'm excited. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
I will either give that to Mother or Linda, maybe she will put it up in the SCIF building and inspire other students to come forward because we're proud of all of our college graduates in 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Good job, good job, Brandon.
Okay, presentation number two.
Yes, Mayor, next we have an update from Southern California Edison. Jeff Lawrence is here to provide that. It's on Phase 2 water rationing. Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, Jeff Lawrence, project manager for Southern California Edison. I just wanted to give you a Stage 2 water rationing update. Last month with the special CPUC meeting, I didn't provide you a June update, so I'll update you on those numbers as well as a few other items here. Our most recent reservoir level is as of last Thursday, and we're currently at 231 acre feet. So it's been a very consistent drop on a weekly basis of about 2 acre feet, so much better off than our historical use over the last three years especially. So the conservation efforts have really done a good job in preserving our groundwater resources. So here are the June numbers. Unfortunately, we had some data issues with the July numbers, and we didn't have those resolved before today's meeting, so I'll have to come back next month and update you on July, but since I didn't have the June update last month, I can provide that update to you now. Through June compared to 2014, we've been able to reduce water usage by about 38%. This while visitor counts have gone up by nearly 7%. So this resulted in a water savings of just under 12 acre feet for the month of June.
Great.
Phenomenal results. This next slide shows you our water conservation efforts since August of 2014 compared to our baseline period, and you can see that, again, year-to-date, very, very good results of 34% reduction in water use. That is about a 112 acre foot reduction in water use since we've implemented Stage 2 rationing for just under a year now, which would be equivalent to about a five-month water supply. So, again, a tremendous job. This accomplished while visitor counts have gone up consistently around 12 to 13% as well. Through our city patrols, we have five new violations since the last time we provided an update to you, so that brings our total to 109 water use violations so far. And in terms of the water allotments and the violations, we did see a bit of a spike in June of the billing cycles that closed. About 1,900 billing periods closed, and 71 of those resulted in a flow restrictor violation, so that's up to 4.1%, where for the several months before that, we were right around 2%. That brings us to a total of 264 flow restrictors that have been issued so far, and of that 264, 218 of those were residential customers and 46 were commercial customers. So I think this is the slide that everyone's most interested in. Normally, we provide you two methods of calculating our Stage 3 forecast, which is when the reservoir would hit the 200 acre foot level. Being that we are approaching that 200 acre foot level and we've seen consistent water conservation results, we're just now forecasting a single method, and that's assuming at least a 25% reduction in water use over our three-year historical average. So we went from mid-September to now mid-October for forecasting that 200 acre foot level in the reservoir. And the end of this month, in August, is when we will be submitting our advice letter to the CPUC to defer Stage 3 water rationing for the time being because of the additional D-SAL plant, the progress we're making there. So where are we at with the additional D-SAL project? We're still on schedule for having the construction done in mid-September. We're targeting September 16th for that, and then about two weeks to commission and get the unit permitted for drinking water. And so October 1st is our target date to have the unit online and operational producing drinkable water. Since the last time I provided an update to you, we completed a 90% design review. We're also about 90% done with the civil work. We anticipate by the end of this week, we'll be 100% done with the civil work. And the D-SAL unit is currently sitting in Long Beach right now, ready to be shipped over to the island on August 24th.
Jeff, is it, is the port of Long Beach right now?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think one thing that we wanted to do was have some type of photo op with the unit, and I don't know if we want to do that here or there.
How much longer do you think it's going to be sitting in Long Beach?
It's scheduled to come over on August 24th. And I don't know about its accessibility in Long Beach.
Right, right, okay.
But there's certainly some we could arrange here on the island when it arrives.
Yeah, there's an interest, we can...
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Just in case. We easily find people if you're here versus trying to send people over.
Okay, we'll just hold off till it gets here then?
Yeah.
Got it.
I mean, it would've been nice to do the whole story, you know, and really do a thing that if it's not going to work, and how do you find it in those big yards over there? I mean, kind of a challenge.
Well, we know folks at the port, we could definitely do that, but if you want to just wait till it's here, that's...
Is there a way to sit here?
It's not going to be long, just another week, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we're good then.
Okay, very good. And then I want to pass along some information if there happen to be any of our customers, residential customers, that are considering replacing their toilet with a water-efficient toilet or converting lawn to turf. I know there might be a limited number of people here on the island interested in such a program, but I want to pass it along nonetheless. Funded by Proposition 1 and then monitored by the Division of Water Resources, they are now offering $6 million towards a toilet rebate program, which customers could be eligible for $100 rebate for toilets that were purchased after August 12th and installed after August 12th. And then on the turf replacement program, $24 million has been allocated for that program. Customers are entitled to $2 per square foot for a total maximum of $200,000 per customer.
$2,000?
I'm sorry, $2,000. So there is additional information online, you can visit savewaterrebates.com for additional information. Just wanted to pass that along through you. This is not an Edison program, this is entirely through Prop 1 and Division of Water Resources.
Great, good news.
And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, council? From the community? No, you're good?
Very good.
This is great news.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to share the updates that we have for you. We're excited about what comes in the next couple of months with the D-SAL plan. We're very optimistic and been working very hard to stay on schedule so that we can get this plan online in time for a lot of the summer tourists that are still coming for the next couple of months, so...
Jeff, before you go, so offline, could you work with Jordan so that we can arrange for the photo op on the 24th and make sure that as many of our folks are there that want to be there when it arrives?
Yeah, will do.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Jeff, could you email me that presentation so I can get it on the website?
Okay. City manager report?
No report, Mayor.
City attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Sampson?
Well, with that presentation, I just want to report that I'd like to thank the people of Avalon for what an awesome, amazing job that we've done saving water. I mean, 34, 38% savings, that's almost 40%. That's like 15% over what we were mandated to save, and I just want to thank the community for doing such an amazing job because we've obviously, we've pushed backstage 3 to October, and we're also setting example for the rest of California and the rest of the world for that matter on what you can really do if you try and you put your heads to it and you put your mind to it and you work together. So I just want to thank you very much, the community, for doing such a great job at saving water.
Very nice, thank you. That's it? No, anything?
Nothing else? Thank you.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Yeah, I have a couple items. One, I attended the Gateway City's Council of Government meeting on, I believe it was August 6th. Few items, I actually did not bring my paperwork with me, but lots of great information and study session. There'll be an active transportation plan meeting on August 24th, which staff is going to attend, so I will not need to attend that. And secondly, I was going to ask in my weekly meeting with the city manager to add this item to our matrix, but wanted to actually just get a quick consensus from council whether it's something you even want to look into before I pass it on, and that would be, several members of our community have had conversations with me regarding traffic on cruise ship days, specifically foot traffic, and I really liked the idea of looking into whether or not we could have some crossing guards at the corner of Crescent and Metropole and Crescent and Clarissa, and what that would really entail for the two days a week, four months of the year, where it's just, we're inundated with people. Mondays and Tuesdays, I'm starting to time it for myself when I'm sitting in an intersection, and so I was just wanting to add that to the matrix, but wanting to see what council's perspective was on that, if that was something that you guys were interested in looking at, what the cost would be and how that program could work.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, do we want to throw it into the whole transportation study we're going to be doing, or is this something you would like to look at quickly?
Separate, yeah, I'd like to move on it quicker than transportation study.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Have we had any accidents? On those...
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
It's just our normal congestion at the time, right?
Normal congestion.
Yeah, it's a mess, I mean, everybody knows that, it's obviously a... And we ought to be happy, if you wanted to, to come back with a estimate for, well, some options, you know, are there volunteers we could use, are there, you know, if we were going to hire a crossing guard, what would it cost, and we can come back with some type of...
Yeah, maybe we could... I'd like to look into the costs and everything.
Yeah.
Before we do it and figure out what we got.
Ask cruise ship too, if they might want to help us out.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking, it was a little more significant than just a quick item on the matrix, so I was looking for direction. I am now very aware of it, that it's sometimes you can sit for five, six, seven minutes trying to get through a...
But there's multiple things that take action there too, because I drive through that quite a bit.
You do, yeah.
And one of the things I did notice was all the freight cars that come and park on the wrong side, and there's no yellow, they park on the red, they don't park on the unloading zone, so now we're shrinking the street and people can't get by, so there's a bunch of other mechanisms that are working in that, not just the foot traffic and those other cars. A lot of it has to do with the freight people that are coming. And don't get me wrong, they do a great job of what they do, but it all comes in at the same time and it shrinks the street, and if there's going to be yellow on one side, that's where you unload your freight, you don't move over to the red and do that. Maybe we can have our code force look at that and maybe enforce some of that, or if everybody's on one side of the street, you have a little more access on the other. When they're both on both sides of the street, it really slows everything down, so maybe we'll look into that also.
Yeah, that was certainly one of the top tickers on my transportation list, but, yeah, okay, great, thank you. Then, and I also wanted to mention that here just because there was a significant group of participants that have asked me about that, so want them to know that I am looking at that. Also, question for city manager, the down payment assistance program. We have received some applications, and I'm just wondering if we could get an update on where we are with those applications or...
I don't have an update for you tonight, but we can...
No problem.
Certainly do that. I know that I've been speaking with Denise and also Mr. Flint, and trying to get that teed up so that I can move forward. So we can, I can give you an update to you and all the council if you want, in an email or a memo tomorrow.
That'd be great, thank you.
And one of the things that the council will need to decide, and it's going to be in a September meeting, is whether you want to continue this program, because you have to put it on the rocks. And so in September, you'll have the time to decide for January through June whether you want to again have this down payment assistance program.
So that's when the new applicants will be able to put an application in after that? If we approve it?
No, there's current applicants right now that are money available now. The question is, for the next six months, and they're starting in January, because I believe when we've looked at the chart that we've, we have spent all that money, that do you want to allocate additional funds?
To that.
To that program for next year. Again, we're recommending that, but that'll be, that'll be the council's decision, and it'll be on the rocks, and then that just means that you have the ability to...
To do, okay.
...enforce that or have that program.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're addressing the applications we currently have.
Right.
Great, and that's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, just want to say that we just finished our 55th year of Little League finally. 55 years we've finally finished, and the kids had a great, the girls and the boys all had a great time and they did a good job, and we're kind of ending our finale this week. We're playing, some of the local kids are over in Huntington Beach are playing our kids in an All-Star game. It's going to be a baseball marathon from 9:00 to 7:00 at night up at the Joe Machado Field this weekend.
Oh, nice.
So we get time to go up there and watch some of the kids in action, they definitely appreciate everybody it goes, and we've had pretty good crowds up there, so just want to thank everybody for that, that's helped support us through the year. And the other thing, I don't know if anybody had the time to go to Pacquiao Field Celebration of Life on Saturday, but it sure was a great tribute to a great man and really how much he's done for this island and the people in it, and it was just overwhelming and it was just a great thing for a great man, so that was, oh, I had to say.
And just to add on to that is Congressman Alan Lowenthal and Donna Carlos were there as well, and they made a presentation that's going to go into the...
Congressional records.
Congressional record, thank you, which was lovely. And also just yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with Gal Corretts, who's the community liaison person for Mayor Eric Garcetti, and her husband, who is a councilman in the 5th District in Los Angeles. And Mr. Congress, or Mayor Garcetti throws a, or hosts a mayor's meeting about every three or four months, and they're looking maybe to do this, not the next one, but the following one here, so that would be lovely to be able to sponsor all those mayors. That's all I have. Oral communications. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the city on issues that are not on the agenda. You are limited to three minutes and no action will be taken at this time. Is there anyone that'd like to speak? Okay.
Want to move to the consent calendar?
Please.
Okay, great. Mayor, we've got five items this evening. You have actions from July 21st and August 4th, regular meetings, and from July 28th, a special city council meeting. Expenditures for your consideration, warrants in the amount of nearly $1 million, EFT in the amount of approximately $600,000, and payroll, a little over $400,000, a total of nearly $2 million. You have the fiscal year 1415 fourth quarter treasurer's report, an item related to the appointment of a vehicle hearing assistant, Mr. Tosca, and a resolution for a grant application to the MTA related to the ferry program and the malt.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 5.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
One second. It's a tie.
Rock, paper, scissors?
It's been second.
Denise, did you get one of the gentlemen?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. And council, community, do you have any input? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Olson.
General business?
Yes, Mayor, we've got three items this evening. The first item is a consideration of proposal from City Fabric for services related to public outreach design permitting bidding construction administration for the Avalon Canyon Fit Trail project. You will recall, this is via the generous donation from Supervisor Knabbe for outdoor exercise equipment in the amount of approximately $300,000. Audra McDonald is here with us this evening, she can talk to you about this proposal and how it will hopefully bring this project to fruition. So Audra?
Good evening, council. We've had this item here a couple of times, now we're getting ready to actually hire somebody to help us design it. We originally had envisioned doing a design build, but we were advised that it has to be over $1 million, and unfortunately, we don't have $1 million for this project. We, I know there were some questions about planning, so I'll just jump to those real quick. This grant was, this project was originally applied in 2010 through a state of California per capita grant program. We brought the concept project to the Planning Commission, which at that time they did approve. 2010 was when that occurred. That money then was redirected up to Joe Machado because we were short some funds there. We went ahead and we reapplied through the supervisor's program, and we were awarded the funding, but the planning approvals had expired, so it went back to the Planning Commission in May and was approved again, so the planning approvals are current, so we're ready, we're ready to go. We did reach out to four separate firms requesting proposals, Melendez of Los Angeles, Craig and Weber, Craig Weber and Associates of Orange County, JDC of Long Beach, and City Fabric of Long Beach. Of those four firms, two responded and only one with a complete proposal, which was City Fabric. We're very excited that they were the ones because they seem like they're going to do a really, really great job. I'm hoping you'll just let us hire him, it's revenue neutral, it's paid for, his services will pay for through the grant.
And I don't know if, Audra, if you mentioned this, forgive me if you already said it, City Fabric's a nonprofit group. They've done some great work in Long Beach, they're very big on the outreach component. Brian Yulashewski, who is the principal, has a background in architecture and public projects, and I think you're really going to like working with him.
And there are public outreach meetings in his proposal, so I have been contacted by some community members that are interested in being involved and are really interested in the project. As you know, we don't have a gym on the island, so this is a great way to add some resistance equipment and allow people to exercise.
That's great, I'm glad it's moving forward.
So I wish someone would have been here to kind of represent the company, so...
Okay, so I do want to, I do want to, he, we had originally put this at a different meeting and it was moved, and I don't recall why. He also has another project that got moved to this night as well, and it's substantially larger project than Avalon, so I told him that I thought, you know, you'll get plenty of opportunities to meet him.
Okay.
He'll be over here, he'll meet all of you, but he did ask if he could not make this meeting, and Ben and I had discussed that, and so...
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Yeah, sounds good. Looks good. I'm pretty happy we're getting on with this too. I've had a lot of public input on this project. People just love fitness over here and love staying in shape, loving being outdoors, so this is going to fit into our whole remodel of this canyon a little bit on our way up to Joe Machado Field, from People's Park to Joe Machado Field, correct?
Yeah.
Little workout stations. Very good. So you have, you have some information on the different types of equipment that will be installed, or that's going to be up to maybe some public input?
Exactly. That's one of, that was one of the real selling points of Brian's proposal, was nothing was off the table. He's willing to look at anything and everything, so if somebody comes in with this like kind of really crazy idea, he's going to consider it, and I think that's really important, so...
Yeah, that'd be nice to know what types of equipment that they're constructing nowadays and they're putting together, just so we know what we can choose from, so I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to do that, right?
We will, yes, and the number of pieces of equipment, too.
Oh, great.
The other thing I'd like to add on this, Councilmember Sampson, is that assuming everything goes on the schedule, it's likely we could have this finished before the summer next year. And in and around the mid timeframe, hopefully if everything works out okay.
We don't have to go to the planning, so that piece is off the table already.
No, this is going to be done on our property? Is it going to be a mixed property?
Our property.
It's all on the city property, right? No, either company development, no, any of that. It's all on city property, correct?
Yes.
Just for informational, so it'll be done on our property?
Yes.
Okay.
So there won't be any agreements that we'll have to arrange for.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the community? Okay, councilmembers?
Make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with City Fabric for an amount not to exceed $17,500 to provide professional services for the purpose of the Avalon Canyon Fit Trail project.
Okay, motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Call for the vote.
Four ayes and one absent. Councilmember Olson.
Item number eight.
Item number seven, Mayor, is the renewal, the consideration of a renewal, I should say, with, for a contract with Parkins and Associates for the Joe Machado Field and also drip irrigation and planter box design in our downtown area, along with training for our public works folks on how to do that. Jen Monroe, I believe.
She's coming.
Coming to speak on this item. It's at a not to exceed amount of $20,000. And here is Jen.
Thank you. Small baby back there, sorry. Okay, yeah, so we're, we're really, we're excited to continue work with this contractor. We've had her with us since 2011. She, Parkins and Associates, the head of the organization is Kelly Parkins, and she's been our agronomist at Joe Machado Field. Most of you have met her. She's come to a couple of city council meetings. And she does all of the planning and has the expertise and does the training for us for anything related to the plant life at Joe Machado Field. So she, you'll recall several years ago, we were just winging it and needed some expert help and brought her on board. And so she does an annual calendar for the implementation of amendments and, and makes recommendations as far as the cultural practices up there, mowing and watering and that kind of thing. So we've had, we've had her do that, and that's been in the budget annually since then. And that's a small part of this contract. And then you'll see that we're recommending in this contract award as well, arborist consultation. And that's something that we haven't had here at the city. We've had, gone out a number of different ways in the past years for any arborist work that we've needed, but it would be nice to have one person that we can call on that's familiar with the island. And she previously hadn't done this work, but has recently brought some, a partner on board who is a certified arborist. Previous to that, it wasn't her expertise and, you know, that's a whole different set of liability insurance and that kind of thing. And so she's brought that into her organization as well. And I know that that is a key thing that the Public Works Department would like to see happen tonight. There's several trees in Avalon on our property as well as other properties that are, you know, near city streets and that kind of thing that really needs some attention. Take a look at. And then lastly is the planter box design and consultation that we're requesting take place, and that is citywide. And basically what we're hoping that you will allow us to do is to use this contractor and their expertise in partnership with people that we're already working with, like the Catalina Island Conservancy and the Ackerman Native Plant Nursery at Middle Ranch, as well as a drip irrigation company, Ewing Irrigation, who won't charge us for their knowledge and expertise in hopes that we purchase the equipment through them. But all of us are in, in talks right now to move forward with this project. And basically what would happen is they would come up with a plant list for us in the city so that we have a list of trees, a list of shrubs, a list of ground coverings. They'll all be drought tolerant. They'll all be chosen specifically based on our climate, the amount of care and everything that we can provide, as well as obviously aesthetics. But all drought tolerant and all pest resistant, so obviously our deer and other pests that we have here on the island. And then they would all be run through drip irrigation and designed specifically for areas in town. So we would have one set that would be through town to the casino building, one that you would see out at the mole planter beds, and then one specifically designed for the, the planter boxes on Front Street. And so the implementation would be over several years. Obviously, that's a lot of material to purchase all at once. So the implementation of that project would be over several years that you would see that. But this is the planning for it, so that we would have an easy step-by-step process. The Public Works Department would be, their gardeners would be trained to install the drip irrigation, install, trained to know how to care for all of those specific plants. And they would just have a template to go off of. The, the couple of things that I would mention about this contract would be that while we have a not to exceed amount in the contract, which is at $20,000, we would certainly be happy to come to you at certain increments to check in about how the progress is. So we would say at every $5,000, we can come and do a progress report for city councils that you know, you know, how far we've gotten with it and where we're going with it. And then the other thing is, you know, part of why it's better to bring on experts like this is because they can look at the big picture and manage, help us manage our resources instead of us being, you know, muddled in the weeds here. And so taking on their expertise and their recommendations, that's really going to help us be able to manage resources, especially water, in a much better way than us just winging it and piecing it along. So I didn't put that, I put in enhanced recreation opportunities because that's what I'm interested in under the goal alignment. But of course, it's also freshwater resources that we're saving here as well. So that's another.
Thank you.
Very nice. Sounds like a great plan. So it's going to save us on manpower, it'll save us a lot of water, and it's going to be a gradual thing, right? So we marry the plants that we're going to start upgrading with, the conservancies. Are they donating these, or are we going to pay for these?
It's going to be a mix of native plants here on the island from the native plant nursery, as well as other plants that would fit in, in look and in, in needs. So you, I'm sure, have all seen the beautiful planter beds on the island company properties, like out at Descanso Beach, and they look fantastic. They look full. They look, you know, really great. They're low maintenance, low water. And so that's what we're looking towards. A lot of our planters can also accommodate trees, and so just knowing what to plant in there instead of the, you know, there's a lot of tree, like the old olive trees that are all through crescent. They look great, but, you know, a lot of them are, have seen better days.
They look terrible.
Yeah, so they need to get, they need to get upgraded. I'm trying to be sensitive about it.
It's not our guys' fault that are here, but those poor olive trees have been butchered.
The other, the other thing that we're going to be providing is training to our folks. They're going to be learning a new skill that's portable, that they can take with them should they decide to go on to something else. And if they don't, then it's going to be fantastic for us because we can deploy it elsewhere.
The hibiscus, I mean, we'll keep the ones, we'll keep the ones that look healthy, that are healthy, that aren't too labor intensive, correct? Because the hibiscus are beautiful.
We're, we're going to rely upon our consultant to tell us what really is a smart use because we're, we're concerned obviously about the water. And so if, if she comes back and says, you know, this particular plant really is very thirsty.
This same contractor, they've done the entire city of Paramount. They've done all of the Home Depot Center, or I guess it's called StubHub Center now in Carson. They've done, so we're not the first municipality that they've worked with. We're not the first citywide program that they've worked with. We are going to have a lot of input on this. So you'll have, you'll be able to come and see, we can have them come to a city council meeting even and present what their vision is for all of those, the planter areas, if you're interested in having that. They have on staff, somebody that will do sketches of all of the locations so that you can get a feel for really what they're going to look like before we commit to anything. But that's what this will be for, is that, that planning piece, you know, not just implementation, so.
Great. All right.
Was this, was this put out to bid, or was it just, we just picked this company, or was it, were there three other people or two other people bid on it, or was that in part of this process, or was it we just went with this because we were familiar with it?
Well, it's an existing contract that we have, and so we're just asking for it to be renewed. But it did not go out to bid.
Do you have any more?
Yeah, I just had one other thing. And Ben, we, you and I had talked about a tree that was taken out of the Joe Machado Field.
The coral tree.
The coral tree, right. So maybe we could talk about that and where it may be.
This could be part of.
This is who we're also working with on that project. We identified one nursery where they had a really nice, full grown coral tree that we had been looking to purchase from them. And we're just trying to figure out where Joe Machado exactly it was going to be. And, and then that tree didn't make it over this last year.
But we could certainly add that to the scope of work for this person.
So yeah, so wherever they think is the best place, I'm sure, because they're the experts, I guess. But we need to replace that tree, and we've been, it's been a while now.
It's been a long time. So the direction can be that we can, we can add that to the scope of work.
Yeah, we need to add that because that tree was taken out. It was some important family of the city, and they've done a lot for everybody in this town. And I'd like to see that tree with their direction and your guys' direction of where it could be placed up on the Joe Machado Field.
We need to get back on it.
That's been about two years now.
I support that.
What happened to it?
It got taken out with the renovation of the Joe Machado Field. It was a big tree. It was a coral tree. It was planted. It was the only shade at the time back then, but then they renovated everything and it was removed. And it was donated to one of the families on the island. And they kind of inquired about it.
And the plaque is in our office still.
And the plaque's in the office.
It is our intention to put that back in. So we'd be happy to add that to this.
If we could, put that in our plans and see if we can get that going. I mean, that'd be incorporated in that.
Jen, I had a question. On the fiscal impact, it says, okay, so the Joe Machado Field was included in the budget, the planter box design and consultation.
Of course not.
I'm sorry, arborist was included in the budget, but the planter box design wasn't. So in their, in their information, the management program for Joe Machado Field with several different things included is $5,820. So that brings it down to like $14,000. How much are they anticipating for the arborist consultation?
It's on an as-needed basis. It would be under their hourly rate. Basically, all of this would be under their hourly rate, so that's why it has a not to exceed. We're anticipating due to the drought restrictions that we will see a dramatic decrease in that Joe Machado portion because we just simply can't do most of what we had done before. A lot of their time had been spent annually coming out and assisting us with our overseeding process, which we can't do because of the drought. So that, that we should see a dramatic decrease in, as well as the fact that we've, you know, we've, we've been working with them for several years, so we know much more what to anticipate up there at Joe Machado Field. So should see less, less hours being billed towards that.
Okay, so, okay, so then, thank you for your comment regarding consideration to come back. That was a conversation that city manager and I had. And I would definitely, since we're, we're not sure how much is not budgeted for, I would, if we were to make a favorable motion on this, I would just ask that we include to come back at 5, 10, and 15,000 increments to just let us know where we are and where, where we're spending the resources on.
That's fine.
So I guess I could throw that into a motion if that's, if this is.
Do you want there's a motion or just a direction along with this?
If you want to make that part of the motion, to add the coral tree to the scope of work as well as the wording increments, I think that's, that's great.
Okay.
Great. I'm glad you mentioned that coral tree because that was, we talked about that last year, so it's a good idea.
Comments from the public? Is there a motion?
Yeah, so formally, make a motion to approve the contract renewal from Parkins and Associates for the Joe Machado Field agronomic program, citywide arborist consultation, and design of ornamental planters and park spaces in Avalon, and authorize staff to execute a contract in addition to adding the replacement of the coral tree at Joe Machado Field, and also that the, that the contract come back at increments of 5, 10, and $15,000, just to give an update as to where they are.
Great. There's a motion. Is there a second?
It's a long motion.
A second.
Moved in second. Call for the vote.
Four ayes and one absent. Councilmember Olson.
Item number eight.
Yes, item number eight is the consideration of awarding a lease contract at Joe Machado Field concession stand. You are likely aware that we have an interim service provider up there currently. We conducted a, a process. We, we had applicants, a panel was convened. They were weighed on their merits, and we have a unanimous recommendation this evening for you to award the contract to Ivan Leva for the contract. However, Jen can also provide you with additional specifics about that that I have not gotten into. So Jen, you want to give some additional detail?
Yeah, we are recommending award to the contractor, Ivan Leva, who's been the interim concessionaire. We've had just really outstanding feedback about his work as the interim concessionaire over July and August. And we've been really pleased to have him up there. And Richard can speak to the, the process, but he was a part of the panel with myself and a local restaurateur to review the applicants and to conduct the interviews. And we were all very pleased with Ivan and, and just the work that he presents. And it's very obvious that he's a hard worker and has a good team behind him. So we're pleased to put him forward as a recommendation to award the contract to. The lease that we're recommending, you have in your staff report, it is consistent with other city leases, so we're hoping that you would be open to moving forward with that. It's the same rate and terms as the previous leases that you have awarded. And in speaking with the contractor, he feels very confident that he can uphold that, that contract, so.
Would you like to bring, I guess, should we wait till if it's approved, and if so, bring Ivan up so everybody can see who he is?
Sure.
Anybody have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
And questions as well?
Yeah, did we, do we look back at, at the last vendor that was there and kind of straighten out some of the, the problems that we had there? Not with the vendor, but with, with just the fact that they weren't quite happy, and we want to make sure that we, we do it right this time?
Yeah, we spent a fair amount of time looking at what we could improve upon with that. I know that Jen has spoken at length with Ivan about that. He, he on his own has also discovered some things that he could do a little differently that allow for a more efficient delivery of service, if you will, up there. I think he's also maximized already in the short time he's been there, some opportunities that he's seen. And unlike what we've said before to this council, we, we see it as a, as a great place to conduct a business. We, we think it does require obviously some, some hustle to, to match your audience and to, and to look forward for these opportunities. So we think that's why he's a great match for this contract.
Great. Glad to hear that, that those concerns have been addressed. And, because we want a sustainable way that this vendor can do business up there. We don't want to keep changing people out, and we want to make sure that there's a recipe for success here, on top of the hard work, which we already know that Ivan is well capable of, and has proved himself to do, so.
It definitely behoves the city to have a contractor in there that, that's happy with their contract. Obviously, we don't want to revisit this over and over again. So I, we've taken great care to review that, yeah. Rich, did you have a?
Yeah, just, I was looking at the, is that a 10-year lease? Is that what we talked about?
Yeah, we're recommending just a current, the same as the other city contracts, so. And we had, we had discussed, you know, whether it was appropriate to have a shorter contract. Obviously, that, you're welcome to make a recommend, any recommendations tonight and to change that. That is what we put out for bid. That's what you previously approved. That's what you previously, um, approved at the prior city council meeting when we requested to go out for bid. Um, but.
But they didn't work out.
So, yeah, I could speak this a little bit. So to Councilmember Hernandez's comment, we, the staff, we decided, we, we had a discussion of a number of considerations that we could modify the lease, but we, we felt it wasn't our place. Council had already deliberated what they wanted in the, in, in a prior session. If you want to change that now, certainly that's your purview, but we decided it wasn't our role to step in and make that because, um, that was something that you guys had already hammered.
Yeah, we already hammered it, but I, again, we want to, we want to be on the side of, you know, success. We don't want to set anybody up for failure. And, and, and with all that being said, you know, there's gonna be times where it's gonna be downtime. He's gonna, there's gonna be El Nino, he's not gonna be able to open. There's gonna be a lot of downtime. So do you still pay that, that lease all that month? You're not gonna be, say it rains for a month, he can't even open up. Does he pay that, he pays that monthly rate? I don't know if that's fair or not. I mean, I mean, there's just a couple of things that I think that maybe should be looked at. I know we've already approved that RFP before. That's just something off the top of my mind. Uh, again, the gas thing was a, a big issue, uh, seven hundred something gallons, but I think we can probably work through all that. I've talked to Mr. Leva about it.
Okay, yeah, I think he found a different method of controlling the gas from what I understand.
Correct.
Seems to.
But I, but see, those are, yeah.
Well, what we've been doing with the, with propane tanks, um, when we first went up there, as July first, they were empty. Councilmember Hernandez was up there with me, we looked at them. He did arrange for the island company to go and fill them. Right now, we've been on the one for almost a month and two weeks. And each propane tank to fill, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars, so it's not that bad. So I think we can do with the two propane tanks for at least two and a half to three months, the way we're operating right now. And that's only gonna cost us seven fifty to eight hundred dollars, so.
Which is good.
Which is really good.
Great.
Do you want to speak to any of the weather concerns that Councilmember Hernandez mentioned?
Well, right, right now we've been.
Before we move on to that though, I'm sorry, I have another gas question. So is it, does, do you pay for the fuel?
Yes.
Okay, you do, that, because the city paid for this last, just this one time.
Yeah, we're in between vendors, I think.
Just to come current with the provider.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're between vendors, right?
Well, yeah, it's a long story, but basically, we, we, there was money owed to a, to a vendor and so just to bring that current, that's what we did.
Okay, that, that one, the concerns of when it's downtime, when it rains, you mean?
Well, right now, right now, we've been operating Monday through Friday. There's been stuff going on up there every day, soccer, baseball, softball, Little League. No, Little League's ending, uh, there, we have the last game Saturday, we'll be up there. For soccer, there's about three weeks left. But again, we're planning on doing a bunch of other stuff. We're planning on becoming a full-service restaurant. We want to do delivery service. I want to do hotel menus to take to all the hotels, to do in-room service. Um, catering, I, uh, the city does hold a catering license that we can use as long as, as long as it doesn't interfere with operations of Vergi Snack Bar right now. And I, it won't, we, we all have a full staff. Richard was saying about weather, that's my only concern. Uh, they're talking about El Nino coming up this winter, so what if it does rain for a month and I can't open, then that's one of my concerns I have right now. But again, I don't know. Right now, we've been doing really good, but when that comes, I don't know what problems we're gonna be having.
Are we also gonna have a downtime of the, uh, seeding of the field too, correct? At some time?
Thanks to the drought, we don't have that now, but it could be, yeah, next year.
I mean, that, that's another consideration, that you're gonna have a downtime. You know, it could be for what, a month, six weeks, or three weeks, whatever, three weeks, or whatever it means.
So the, the way the lease is set up is it's the greater of the square footage or eight percent of gross receipts. So in months when he's closed, the rent is gonna be about a little less than twelve hundred dollars a month. Um, that's assuming he doesn't do any business that month. That's what he, that, that's what the nut is.
That's adjusted.
But part of the beauty of this lease, I think, is that it, to what Ivan was thinking of, you can use it for other, it's a, it's a commercial kitchen at his disposal.
And then right now, the way we're operating, again, just Monday through Friday, we've been doing really good. So, I mean, we had no problem paying the rent.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds like you got some good ideas too.
We've have, yeah, well, we're planning on adding a bunch more items to the menu, so hopefully it becomes a local favorite. Um, again, there's a lot of contractors that I've been talking to. They, a lot of the times, they can't leave work for break. Everything's packed downtown, so I'm hoping they can go up there or we can do lunches for them, deliver to the job site.
Like a catering thing?
Basically catering. And, um, we're just really happy we're up there.
Sounds like a win-win, because you got a really state-of-the-art, a nice state-of-the-art compact, um, brand-new kitchen and, um, we get a good, we get a good contractor like yourself in there, uh, vendor that, um, is gonna make really good food and.
You guys gotta go up there and try it out. And we're up there today with the soccer game, so if you guys want to go up there, we'll be up there till about 10:00 PM tonight.
Very good.
Thank you.
Scott?
Not that one.
I just want to hopefully, you know, we don't want to go and do what happened, we want to see what happened last time to the last vendor. We want to see, we want success, that's what we were all aiming for. And what we, that's what we want up there. And just with that, with this contract, I was, I was just thinking, if there's any kind of leeway, if something does happen, that he can't do that, is there a provision that we could make somewhere along the line? Or do we have to change the contract saying, okay, he can't work up there, he can't do this?
You guys can certainly modify the lease if you, if you see fit, absolutely. Again, we just felt that we, it wasn't our place considering you already deliberate that, deliberated that, so we.
Right.
But if you want to add a provision, it's certainly your purview.
Can I, um, and just, just to look out for everybody, this isn't against our leases, but I just want to caution the council that if we make an adjustment on this lease and we do have all the businesses on the pier and stuff, that the rain is gonna affect them too. I, I appreciate your, your thoughts, Richard, but just to caution you to think about all that too. It could impact every lease we have.
Okay.
That's why we have, um, and those were exactly my comments. Um, that's why we have the, the linear, per lineal square feet versus eight percent. Um, because, you know, the rain will, will benefit some businesses, but will greatly impact others and vice versa. So it's, it's really part of the cost of doing business.
Sounds like you got, she's got some good ideas.
Yeah, no, that's great.
To mitigate that.
I'll make it work.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll work. I think it's gonna be really successful and I mean, we have, it's got a lot of potential.
Yes.
So hopefully, everything will go good. I just want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity.
So it's a ten-year lease as we're talking about?
Ten.
Ten-year for tonight?
Yes.
And that gives them time to, like the other, like, like the other leases, it gives them time to really develop a long-term program for what they want to do because they're not worried about having to find a new place next year.
So a five-year with a five-year extension doesn't sound good to you? Just in case where there is some.
I'll go for, I'll go for the ten.
Okay.
No, I, and I was thinking about that too, because I saw that you had had that question. Um, but again, it's, you know.
That's okay.
I don't think it's fair to make a change for one.
That's fine. Just asking. Okay, now, does the changes have to be, uh, something that is in line with what the city council wants? Or is this just something?
Yes, you guys decide if you're making any changes.
That way, if there's something that's out of line in, in the changes, not just, not to predict anything that's gonna happen that you're gonna do is gonna be out of line, but I want to make sure what our authority is here, that we, we can make changes or we can put a stop on some things if they're not quite.
You control the lease.
You control the lease. The, the city staff cannot change this lease. So we'd have to come back, if something is awry, we have to bring it back to the council for an amendment to this lease.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good, just, great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
So, or, or can we, can we do a motion before we congratulate?
That's right.
Okay, well, um, comments from the public? Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to award, approve and award the contract to Ivan Leva for the Joe Machado Field Concession Stand contract and authorized staff to execute a lease contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can you call for the vote?
Four ayes and one absent, Councilmember Olson.
Congratulations, Ivan.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Congratulations for council tacos today.
Now, is it possible to, um, open up the, the housing authority? Okay, okay. Okay. The Housing Authority of the City of Avalon Board of Commissioners meeting? And is there a roll call?
Yes. Board Member Cassidy, here. Board Member Hernandez.
Here.
Board Member Sampson.
Here.
And Chairman Marshall.
Here.
For the record, Board Member Olson is absent.
Are there any announcements?
None.
Written communications?
None.
Oral communications? This is an opportunity to the public to, to come and speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. Okay. Consent calendar.
No items this evening?
What?
Three, am I the wrong one?
You have to see the party? No.
We're doing housing.
Hospital board.
No, we're doing housing authority.
We're doing housing authority.
Oh.
Yes.
He said housing, right?
Yes, I did say housing authority.
Scott, where are we, you and?
Come on, jeez.
Okay. Consent calendars, nothing general business.
Yes, we have one item this evening. It is related to a resolution for the opening of a new LEAF account. Our new finance director, Bob Messer, is here and he can provide a brief, uh, report on what this is. Bob, would you please deliver this? Oh, I'm sorry, our former finance guy is here too. Whichever one wants to deliver the report or tag-team it, however you want to do it.
Uh, good evening.
Quite an opening.
They, they watch the meeting and time things perfectly.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Chris Wojcik.
And I'm Bob Messer.
Um, yes, we have this one, uh, item to present, uh, this evening. We need to open up a new LEAF investment account for the housing authority. We have some substantial, uh, monies, um, that are in the city's coffers and we have to, um, better segregate those dollars and earn a higher rate of return on those dollars. So we need to create or open up a new LEAF account with the state of California. And that's what the purpose of this is, is to, um, um, we need your approval in order to, uh, set up that account. If you have any questions, I can.
Can we talk about what LEAF is?
LEAF is California's Local Agency Investment Fund. What allows local agencies to participate in the state treasurer's, uh, investments. So we get the benefit of, of their investment portfolio. And all, we can transfer our funds same day and it's in the account and transfer funds out. It's very liquid and we get about, right now, about point three percent return on that, which is higher than, than a bank, uh.
That's a lot.
A bank is about point zero zero three.
Oh, yeah.
So it's still better than that.
Well, weren't we also being charged to keep our money at, at our prior provider as well? So, I mean, we're not gonna be charged the same amount and we're getting this modest return.
Well, uh, the, the funds, we're responsible for the funds, but we will putting that with the Local Agency Investment Fund and it'll be in the hands of the state controller.
And just to add to that, Ben's right, we, uh, we're specifically gonna be moving four million dollars into this new LEAF account. And these were the unspent bond proceeds relating to the tax allocation B series. We've been holding these monies, um, in anticipation of a housing development, uh, project. And, uh, when we recently completed the refinancing of our tax allocation A and B bonds recently in the month of last month, uh, the agreement, the custody agreement holding these monies was ended at that time. So we elected to have those monies, uh, be given to the city instead of paying, um, uh, the former bank that was holding these monies, a, a large sum of money to manage these monies for us, which essentially are just putting them into LEAF as well. So we felt we could better track and segregate these monies on our own.
Can I ask you how much money we're talking about? And when, what can we act, what is this money gonna be spent on? Or what, what can we spend it on?
This is four million dollars and it's, uh, money that was, uh, the proceeds of the, of the, the bonds that were just refunded.
You can spend this money on low-income housing, basically low and, and, and moderate income housing. So you're talking about the down payment assistance program. You can, uh, build, uh, units, apartments, housing, um, you can have rent, um, assistance. One of the things that the council, we've, we've had Elizabeth Hall come and talk about some kind of programs that, uh, you can spend this on. This is up to you to spend however you want on, you know, basically low-income housing for the city.
Is there a timeframe on that, uh, when we can spend it?
You can spend it right now and I think we'd like to spend it.
Within?
As quickly as we can. So the state doesn't reach its tentacles in and take it away like they did the other redevelopment funds. We, we, we don't think they will because these are bond funds, but still, it would be, you know, and so there, there's a number of things. I know we've had one study session, um, we can come back with another to give you options. Again, it's up to your total discretion on how to spend this money.
And the down payment assistance program is not part of this or it is?
This is part of this, yes. This is where part of the money comes from.
And you say this makes three percent? This?
No, and it's point three.
Well, point three.
So point three percent of four million bucks for the financial wizards, how much is that?
Just a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
Don't ask him to do math, that hurts his head.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Does this get credited to, uh, Mr. Messer as his first opportunity for new revenue stream?
No, I won't, I won't take credit for this one.
We're giving it to you.
The twelve thousand dollar windfall.
Hey, any little bit counts.
Oh, absolutely. So are we, so we're gonna have another, uh, session?
Right, we've had some interesting discussions with, with island stakeholders in the last few months about some concepts which we'd like to flesh out and bring back to you for consideration. We've definitely seen some changes in prior positions and I think we've got some exciting possibilities. Really, um, the phase-two water rationing is limiting, um, anything that we can do in the development arena. That's our biggest issue right now. But if it does rain, um, I think it would be appropriate to come back and start talking seriously about some of the stuff. However, in the interim, we can also talk about down payment assistance, other things that don't.
Right.
Uh, impact, um, aren't impacted by building.
And, and this, you also have, remember, you also have whatever money you eventually get from the sale of the Whitley property goes in with this as well. So you could have, if it's sold for the asking price right now, you have over six, six million dollars. And so one of the things that, um, that Elizabeth Hall has suggested that you may want to consider is if you want to set aside a certain amount of money, let's say three or four million dollars of this, you go out to the market and you say, we've got three million dollars to build a project in Avalon. And developers then come and they present to you the type of various projects they want to do and then you get to pick, uh, which developer you'd like to negotiate with. So that's one option. But, but we can have a study session where, again, it's a smorgasbord of housing opportunities for you. Wonderful.
Good work, Bob.
And Chris?
And Chris? Absolutely.
Okay, further questions or comments? Okay. Counsel, your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the housing authority to open a new LEAF account for the purposes of achieving higher interest earnings.
Seconded.
Moved in second, further comment? Call for the vote?
Four ayes and one absent. Still.
Holy's missing out.
Board Member Olson.
The executive director will report?
None.
Housing Authority Council report?
None.
Commissioners report? Anything you want to say about housing?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. All righty, we'll adjourn that meeting. And we will go to the Avalon New Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting of Tuesday, August 18th. Roll call, Denise?
Trustee Cassidy.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Sampson.
Here.
And Acting Chair Marshall.
Here. Any announcements?
None.
Written communications?
None.
Presentation, an update from the Catalina Island Medical Center, I don't either.
I don't know, he told me he was going to come at every meeting, so that's why I put it on there.
Oh, okay.
Best to have it there, in case Brian shows up.
Yeah, that's okay, Brian, no problem. Oral communication, the board will accept comments from the public at this time, no action will be taken on non-agenda items, and you are limited to three minutes. Okay, being there's no one here, consent calendar.
Two items this evening, um, actions from the July 21st Hospital Board of Trustees, and then the CEO and CFO's reports dated, dated, excuse me, July and June respectively.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve item one and two.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Can you call for the vote?
Four ayes, one absent.
Okay, no general business, chair's report, he's not here, member report?
None.
None here.
Okay, meeting's adjourned, we'll return to the City Council meeting, and we will be going into a closed session.
We have one closed session, public employment title, human resources.
Okay, we'll see you in a little bit. And we are back, back from closed session.
There is no official report of action under the Brown.
Okay, thank you very much, good night, Tony.
Night, Tony.
Night, Tony.
Meeting adjourned.
All right.